All right.
All right, welcome everybody to the March 2nd, 2021 City Council Meeting, City of North Bend, virtual, as we have been for some time. Would the clerk please confirm the role?
I'm mayor, all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Rosen.
Except for Mr. Rosen, thank you very much. On tonight's agenda, we have, the consent agenda has seven items, can I get a motion? No?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Mr. God help second by Mr. Elwood, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. And moving right along, we have citizen comments, if you are a member of the public and wish to address council this evening on an item not on the agenda, please indicate in either the chat box or we'll try and keep my voice unmuted. Again, star nine on the phone or in the chat box, if you would like to address council, you'll get three minutes.
I am not seeing anybody, mayor.
All right, very good, thank you very much. And we'll move right along then, our first, next item on the agenda, number eight is presentation from the Economic Development Commission delivering their annual report. My understanding is we have Commission Chair Wilson with us tonight, are you with us?
I am indeed.
There you are, thank you very much for being with us this evening, I'll turn it over to you to, for your report.
Well, I'm excited to tell you about what we've been doing over the past year and what we're going to be doing over the year to come. And in 2020, we shifted from focusing on the city's brand toward creating an economic development plan. And the problem was, you may have heard that there was a global pandemic last year that is continuing even now, and that caused us to have to shift our workload and our collaboration to respond to this new economic reality. So, a few of the notable achievements in 2020 were, new staff, we got Jesse Reynolds, who is a staff liaison, the city staff liaison. He is also the Economic Development Manager, and he has been steering all of our projects and really spearheading our efforts, and has done an amazing job, so it's been great to work with him. We also had some new commissioners join as well. We managed to score Chris Castleberry, who is also the Snoqualmie Tribal Council Deputy Secretary and Treasurer, and he joined us in May of 2020. And we also got, we have an all-star cast here, we got Beth Burrows. She's the owner of the North Bend Theater, the president of the Downtown North Bend Foundation and North Bend Art and Industry. And she's also Citizen of the Year, and she joined us in November of 2020. So it's been great working with all of these new faces and this great wealth of talent that we have on the EDC. And the city in 2020 received the Port of Seattle Economic Development Partnership Grant. That was due to the hard work of Bree Kevren, she secured that grant. Bree, I have to add, is Employee of the Year, so we really do have just a, an amazing lineup working on these projects. She secured that funding, and what we were able to do is get some tourism wayfinding signage and seasonal light pole banners. And let me show you what I'm talking about. This may look familiar to you, but it wasn't always so bright and shiny and easy to read. And we got three new signs, two of which were installed in February of 2021. In addition to that, we did, probably my favorite project of the year was the North Bend Rapid Relief Program. This was very critical work for our local businesses and organizations. And the city received funds and we were able to allocate $183,000 to local organizations. And so we were able to go through and look at what the areas of greatest need were, who our partners were in the city in terms of organizations who'd been there and supported the community in the past. And then it was like being Oprah, you get a grant and you get a grant. It was just so wonderful to be able to support these businesses who have really been pillars of our community. And we also participated, the city staff did this a little bit more than the EDC, but we supported the local businesses, there's a lot of need due to the restrictions from the pandemic. And one of the things we specifically talked about in the EDC was relaxed street use permitting and road closures, so that there could be outdoor dining and things of that nature. But I know Bree and other members of the city staff were instrumental in working with local businesses to say, get PPP funding. I mean, there are some local business owners who speak English as a second language or who have difficulties in applying for these kinds of relief measures. And the city really pulled together and supported these local businesses and organizations during their time of greatest need. You probably have heard this, Snoqualmie Valley Transportation Coalition initiatives right now are focused on bringing essential transportation to valley residents. Unfortunately, Route 628 was cut in June of 2020. And that was a pretty severe blow to some of the residents who really rely on that for their essential transportation. Commissioner Castleberry specifically has been very involved in working closely with the SBT to provide support for their initiatives to ensure that there is adequate transportation for our residents. And part of the EDC's work is connections with the council and with the community. And it's to promote among the community members, understanding of what the economic policies and objectives are. And then to also assist council in making those objectives happen. And so now I'm getting to the most exciting part of our work, which is the Economic Development Plan that we've started working on recently. Now, the Economic Development Plan is going to include two parts, and I'm really excited about this because I think it serves not just what the council needs, but what the city as a whole, what the residents need. So when we're putting together our Economic Development Plan, we're actually going to create two documents. One is going to be a technical document that council can use to link the goals and strategies with the actions that need, that we need to get there. But there's also a public-facing document, which is a summary of those same objectives and goals and actions, complete with infographics and just accessible language and information, so that everybody can understand that we share a common goal in developing our local economy. Jesse has put us on a, on a schedule, so that we make sure that we get this done, and we are committed to getting this done in 2021. So to that end, in January, we had two goals which we met. One was to finalize our vision statement for the Economic Development Plan, and the other was to refine, excuse me, refine the goals of the Economic Development Plan. So the vision statement that we came up with was, "The Economic Development Plan will create a roadmap for economically diverse and sustainable community that reflects North Bend's unique identity as a highly livable town and outdoor recreation destination." And you may recognize some of that as resonating with our brand statement, which is what we were hoping to achieve. In February last month, we were able to finalize our goals and also start work on an economic SWOT analysis. And if you're wondering, what's a SWOT analysis, because I was, I had to Google it. It stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So here are the goals that we finalized, there are five of them. The first one was in terms of jobs, to encourage diversity of living wage employment opportunities and provide support to employers, so that citizens have many local career options. Related to businesses specifically, we want to promote healthy thriving businesses by creating an environment that is conducive to the success of local businesses and encourages new businesses to enter the market and meet the needs of the community. Fiscal sustainability, promoting economic, promoting economic health for the North Bend General Fund through business growth that generates revenue for quality infrastructure and city services. Fourth, housing, support diversity of housing options necessary for a local workforce that also meets the needs of our community. And finally, tourism, recreation, and the arts/culture. Promote the city's heritage, unique natural environment, and the arts to build community, livability, economic growth, and tourism. So those are the goals that we finalized this, just this last month. Going forward in 2021, our schedule is going to include, for next month, to finalize our SWOT analysis and develop the policies that will support the Economic Development Plan. April, we will finalize those policies and develop strategies and action plans. In May, we'll finalize the strategies and action, the policies, strategies, and action plans. And then summer of 2021, we will create the documents that I was telling you about. Toward the end of the year, we'll refine the plan details with council and then market to support agencies. And once we're done with that, we're already looking forward to, once we're done with the Economic Development Plan, what's next? And what we plan to do is start the economic development element of the comprehensive plan. As you probably know, the city has a long-range comprehensive plan that looks forward 20 years into the future. That plan's updated every eight years, and the next one is due before 2024. It's required by the Growth Management Act. It includes an economic development element, and so we will be focusing on that as soon as the Economic Development Plan is complete. So those are those, those are our plans, did anyone have any questions about any of that?
Chair Wilson, that was fantastic, and I can see that you know your way around Zoom as well, to be able to do that in a presentation. Did want to mention you, two other members of your commission, I think Wendy Parslow?
Yes.
And Martin Mason Pierre, if that's anywhere close to correct, right, that rounds out the five of you?
That's correct, yes, Wendy is our senior member, and she's been around for quite a while. She was involved in the brand development, so she's been fantastic, fantastic resource in putting together this Economic Development Plan consistent with that. And then Martin just joined us recently in 2021.
Thank you, counsel? Mr. Garcia?
I just have to say, that was probably one of the most well-presented and concise, to-the-point presentations we've ever had, that I, since I've been around from a commission. And I think that the rest of the commissions, the gauntlet's been thrown down. I feel like it's exciting to know that we have a group as talented as you guys are out there working on this, and that you guys have a great goal and direction. And I'll look forward to, been up and to harass Jesse farther down the road, see if he's still at the meeting.
Right, Ms. Miller?
Thank you, I will follow, Chris, I, I'm astounded in such a great way, I'm thrilled, and I can't wait for the future. So, welcome to all of you, and thank you for all that you're doing and continue to do, we are lucky.
Thank you, Mr. Loudback?
Thank you, Corinne, I think this is one of the chances that we get to, to take the opportunity to thank you personally and everybody who's involved on the commission. It's an aggressive agenda, but I have a strong feeling that you're going to get there and we're going to be very, very impressed with the results. But most of all, I wanted to say that we are so grateful to have you and your team working on behalf of the citizens of North Bend to get this economic plan up and running, because it's really about what you guys are going to help formulate the plan that's going to move us forward economically. And I, for one, certainly appreciate your efforts and look forward to the result.
Thank you.
Colin?
Congratulations on your grant, and that's very exciting to help all our businesses in North Bend. And I didn't know that Jesse was so new to our team, but the word SWOT, he's already given out to us, where we had our own SWOT project that we had to do, so it's very exciting and good job.
Just to be sure, we're not misleading anyone, Jesse is new leading the EDC, not new to the city, he's been with us a couple of years now, yeah. Mr. God help, you may be the, oh, Mr. Elwood, sorry.
I was going to lead with the quick that Jesse's still green behind the ears, but that's okay, we won't hold it against him. He's spotting us with his SWOT analysis, so that's good. No, that was an excellent presentation, thank you, and I would love to echo my colleague's sentiments, the conciseness, the preciseness of it, really got me fired up and motivated. I do agree, it's an aggressive schedule, but just by this presentation and your demeanor alone, I have no doubt that you guys will achieve those goals. So I'm really excited to be a, you know, go along on the journey and, and understand and appreciate the successes as you go forward. So with that, I mean, it'd be great if you have any other materials that you could send to us. I don't know if you have some sort of documentation or anything, just so I could read into it a bit more. You've definitely drawn me into your work, so I'd like to just read a little bit more, if it's possible. If there is nothing that exists, that's fine, but if it is, that'd be great.
Councilmember Elwood, we can send you the 2020 summary and then our draft work plan for 2021? All the council?
That's great.
And even suggest that you send along tonight's presentation, that's pretty cool in and of itself, it's a nice overcap. And I'm sure they'll be getting back to you from time to time with some of the draft materials.
And Jesse, could you let the rest of us know when you send that to Brendan, because we'll want to give him a quiz at a meeting?
I'll just close it out with ditto, and I do appreciate, this presentation was one of the most, you know, from start to finish, told a story, now I would love and looking forward to seeing you fill in more of that story, but well done, and thank you. You know, all our commissions work very hard, and you obviously have done a lot of work in this, so thank you.
And I'll close it out by echoing that and saying, you know, I'm just so excited, this is a driven group, they work obviously very well together, and with Jesse's leadership and Bree's input, they're, they're going to accomplish great things for us, it's really, it's really awesome to see them engaged. So, thank you very much for that. And with that, we'll close it out and we'll move on to the next item. Corinne, thank you so much for being here with us tonight.
Thanks for having me.
Counsel, next on our agenda, item number nine, and ordinance adopting new sewer rates, Ms. Masco?
Thank you, mayor. This is the evening for council deliberation, we held the public hearing at our last council meeting and first reading of the sewer rates and GFC ordinance. So I'm not going to go over the entire presentation that you've seen multiple times now, but I just do want to kind of highlight some of the, how we got here. We originally contracted with FCS Group in 2016 to review our rate structure, and that ended up with a revised rate structure and a fee schedule that incorporated, encompassed 2016 through 2020. And then in 2021, included a CPI increase, which was 2.4%. So we had contracted with the FCS Group again to update our schedule and GFCs to ensure that we can continue meeting our financial obligations and supporting our sewer utility operations. And as well as looked at our future debt obligations for Phase Two of the wastewater treatment plant capital improvement. So the outcome of this rate study is a new recommended fee schedule for the years 2022 through 2025 for sewer rates, which includes an annual 2.5% rate increase, increase, excuse me. And the GFC rates are slated to decrease for non ULID parcels and increase slightly for ULID parcels. And then beginning in 2022, they will have an inflationary increase based on the construction consumer index, construction cost index, excuse me, I knew I would get that wrong. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have Sergey from the FCS Group who conducted the rate study here, and he is available to answer any questions as well.
Counsel? Any clarifying questions? Mr. Garcia?
Don, aren't we mandated by state law that this fund has to pay for itself?
Yes, that's correct, it's an enterprise fund, and so therefore it is treated as a business, and so it has to be self-supporting. So the sewer rates support the sewer utility, that's correct.
So if we were to vote this down, would we be negligent of our obligations as a council?
I would hate to put that term associated with it, but
In my words?
Yeah, I, but you are correct in that we do need to support the operations, and we also have debt obligations for the debt that was issued for Phase One for wastewater treatment plant. And as part of that, the council agreed to make sure that we had a rate structure in place that was able to support the operations and those debt obligations.
So it'd be prudent just to keep this short and sweet.
I would say so, yes.
Ms. Colin?
Just a quick question about the yearly inflation, do you have like a guess on how much that might be?
Are you referring to for the GFCs?
I'm not sure what I'm referring to.
Well, the sewer rates do not include an inflationary increase. The 2.5% is what the annual increase will be for 2022 through 2025. And that would, that would incorporate and, or include any inflationary cost increases that the city was to realize during those years. The GFCs, once that rate is set and goes into effect, then on January 1st of every year, until the GFC calculation is redone, that would be an inflationary increase, and it's based on the Seattle Construction Cost Index, and it really fluctuates from year to year, it's really hard to tell.
Any other clarifying questions? Although we, oh, Mr. Loudback, there you are.
Well, since we, since we drug Sergey out here again, I just thought I'd say, Sergey, I've, we were just commenting on a previous presentation, I just had to say that in the three times I've seen your presentation on this particular subject, you're thorough, complete, and very well, you have a great wealth of knowledge on this topic, and I want to thank you for helping to shepherd us through this process, so thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Much. And while we did do the public hearing in our last session, if there is a member of the public, we would take any public comment at this time. Seeing none? Any final questions, comments, or call for a motion? Mr. Loudback, believe this came through your committee?
I'd be happy to make this motion, Your Honor. Motion to approve AB 21-026, an ordinance setting new sewer rates and general facility charges and amending the taxes, rates, and fee schedule as a final reading.
I have a second.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Loudback, second by Mr. Garcia, Mr. Loudback, did you have anything to add?
Your Honor, we've been down this topic several times, and I would recommend a due pass for all my fellow council people.
Thank you, anyone else? Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, I did, I mean, I'd like people to know that this isn't something that we take lightly or enjoy doing. We don't, we don't, we do not enjoy raising the rates on our citizens. But we have, we have to operate a sewer and a water utility, and they have to, they have to be solvent, and this is what it takes to get that done. So, please don't feel that this is pleasurable, or that we take it lightly, that, that we're doing this, because we don't. The fact of the matter is, it's what we're supposed to do, and that's what we're doing here today.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Also, I'll add, thank you, Chris, for that, I'll just add forward that, you know, this is, there's a long history here, so we're in the process of having to move forward, and it's a difficult scenario, like Chris said, and it's not something we're really, really happy to do, but we, we need to go forward this way, so I'm standing by it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, and with that, the motion before you is to approve AB 21-026, an ordinance setting new sewer rates and general facilities charges and amending the taxes, rates, and fee schedule as a final reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, it is unanimous, thank you very much for that. Sergey, thank you for your work, I know we'll be seeing you again in about a month, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
All right, and counsel, with that, one of the shortest agendas we have had in quite a while, we are into mayor council administrator concerns and initiatives, I'm going to cheat tonight and jump ahead of you. And because I want to, I want to make a couple of comments coming out of the, out of the gate here. I want everyone to know, who will listen to this recording, what an awesome council we have, but particularly this week, calling attention to Councilmember Miller, being recognized by our community as the outstanding council member in the Snoqualmie Valley. Quite an honor and quite a recognition by the community. And unless, unless you think that we just had one. But no, Mr. Garcia was also a finalist in that, and so we have two outstanding council members recognized by the community for their service, and so thank you all for that hearty round of applause, you all deserve it, absolutely. I also want to jump ahead of a comment I think might be made here in a moment, but I'm going to steal a little bit of his thunder and say, we did receive through Councilmember God Health, the notification that Eastside Fire and Rescue's designation as a nonprofit has been finally approved. I want to call that out in particular, because he has worked tirelessly on this for years to get this accomplished, it's a huge accomplishment. And for the city as a partner in Eastside Fire and Rescue, we could not have reached that milestone without him sticking to it, and so thank you, Alan, I appreciate all your work on that behalf. With that, with that, I'll, I'll turn it to you, you, I'll give it right back to you, Alan.
Oh, thank you, yeah, you did steal my thunder, but it became official, yesterday was the first official day. We do have the Articles of Incorporation, our nonprofit, so that's exciting. It is something that has been processed with Eastside Fire and Rescue for well over eight years now. We had talked about governance, and talking about how we could define Eastside Fire and Rescue, and for those that don't understand, up until now, the employee of record was District 10. And what that meant is, as board members, we could vote on all kinds of things, but if for some reason District 10 chose not to approve what we said, District 10 could basically say, we don't agree with the board. At this point, this now moves everything, including the employee of record to the nonprofit, Eastside Fire and Rescue, therefore taking some liability that District 10 would have, because they've been holding on to a large liability from their standpoint, and spreading that liability to where it should be, and giving us the ability to make sure that as a board member, that we can set our own destinies moving forward. And then, so that's really the exciting part about it, and we're glad it finally got done. So. Chris, you got a question?
Did you want to comment to that?
Mr. Gothel, could you remind everybody who the Chair of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board is?
Um, well, that would be me for the last, what, seven years now, eight years?
And moving forward, who will that be?
They approved me again.
Congrat, congratulations, and again, this is one of those things where I don't think a lot of people realize how much work is put in by Mr. Gothel in this, and it benefits our community greatly, so thank you, sir.
It truly is a labor of love, and it really, from my standpoint, is one of the most valuable things we as a city can provide, and that's public safety. And so when I got involved with the city council, this was And so when I got involved with the, the city council, this was one of my initiatives. It started out with getting involved, and Chris was part of that, when we were trying to get a new fire station. And if you ever looked at the old fire station, and it took a lot. We had, we had mayors and we had city managers try to negotiate for a lot of years to get it done. And we basically, as a council finance, said, we need to get it done. And so I stepped in as a director. And then about three years after being a director, I was voted chair and had been chair since then. So I think it's great for our community. I don't think this community could get the type of service level that we get at the, at the price that we pay and this for the size of our community. So we're blessed to have partners like District 38, District 10, City of Sammamish, City of Isiqua, been phenomenal partners, and we're looking forward to moving forward and doing some great things moving forward with the association. So with that, that's all I have tonight, except to everybody stay safe and healthy. It looks like we're getting more vaccines. I'm sure that Rob, in the coming weeks, will have a lot more to talk about local capabilities here. I know Eastside Fire and Rescue is working extremely hard. I have been pushing them on my concern for the at-risk community that we have and the seniors that are homebound right now and, and hoping that we can get some mobile capabilities to get out to some of those people who haven't been able to get vaccines. So if you can get the vaccine, please recommend you do. Everybody stay safe. We're, we're coming to a point where there's some positives going forward. So let's keep the positives moving forward and keep everybody healthy.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Alan. That was beautiful. Thank you, everybody. Rob, thank you for your kind words. I appreciate that. Chris, congratulations. I'm so humbled. I, I can't, I don't have any words left. But I just want to say to each and every one of you, our council members, that I am so honored to work with. And whether we agree to disagree, there's a level of respect here that's so healthy to have in a city collection of council and mayor, and I'm very proud to be a part of that. So let's keep up the good work and fight the good fight. And please be safe. Wear those masks.
Thank you much. Ms. Colin.
Yes, we are getting more vaccines, but it's not coming as quickly as we would like. I just learned today that King County will, the state of Washington will be getting 60,000 doses, but only 18,000 will be going to King County, and then will be on hold for three weeks. But luckily, Johnson and Johnson is going to be, their vaccine will be made by Merck. And so hopefully by May, there will be a dose for everyone who wants one, who is an adult. And so, yes, the mask work, keep doing it, and we're doing a good job in our part of the world.
Thank you. Mr. Elwood.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loudback.
Congratulations to Alan and to Mary and to all, all you award winners. Mr. Garcia, once again, I, you, you must have a wall full of those awards between best pizza in the valley and best council person and everything else. But we have, we have a very accomplished group here on the council, and I'm, I'm proud to be a member of that. Nothing much more to add, other than thanks to everybody for finally getting the sewer rates and fees done. I think we all appreciate the fact of how long this took and all the work that was involved. And, and finally, we won't talk again until after St. Patty's Day. So in the brush, and you all take care and be safe. And Chris, we don't have to run a 5K on St. Patty's Day this time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Garcia, round it out for us.
Well, Ross, we could still drink, though. So there's that. Everybody stay safe. You know, we, we've welcomed back at least the elementary school kids. So driving around now, there's, there's kids out on, at the bus stops again. And be careful by the, by the school. I'd like to see TPW potentially bring up the notion of a crosswalk that crosses Cedar Falls Way at Maloney Grove towards the city hall, which would be a great connection to the Tanner Trail. That, that road is difficult to cross as a pedestrian. So I'd like to, I'd like to do that. See us look at that. Mary, congratulations. This is a big deal. We, we're happy for you. And I'm going to round off my comments by saying, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Suzy. Happy birthday to you. Happy 26th birthday, Suzy. We love you.
Nicely done, Mr. Garcia. Mr. Miller, anything on behalf of the administration?
How in the world could I follow up that great performance? We got to get him on The Voice. Nothing tonight. Thank you, Your Honor.
Really, with nothing more. I've got three short other items I just want to make sure the public is aware of. King County Metro is seeking community feedback through a short survey to help transit planners identify and recommend priority service changes this September and beyond. I encourage all residents that use King County Metro, and even those who do not, to take this short survey and help preserve current Snoqualmie Valley bus routes, and more importantly, get them back. This survey is open through March 8, and there is a link to the survey found on the news section of the city's website. Incredibly important that King County be hearing us. We need service out here. The new Torgeson Skate Park is officially open to the public. The new 13,000-square-foot concrete skate park is located on the southwest side of Torgeson Park, near the main parking plaza. Although construction work is complete, landscaping is still taking place in the surrounding area. So the public is encouraged to use the pathway designated by Orange Construction Fencing to access the skate park. It is open during daylight hours only, as all our parks. And finally, King County Library System has used a Federal Cares Act grant from the Washington State Library to install external Wi-Fi access points at 44 county library locations, including North Bend. The new external access points provide residents with access to the internet outside the North Bend Library while the building remains closed to the public. You do not need a library cord or Wi-Fi password to access this free service. KCLS.org wireless network. And that is all I have for you this evening. Thank you all. I appreciate what a great meeting. And, and congratulations again to those of you recognized by the community for your leadership. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before I do that, I just, I think, did, did Mr. Kenyon have something he wanted to respond to?
Well, with counsel and the mayor's permission, I, I did want to take an unsolicited cheap shot at council member Loudonback.
Oh, well, by all means, thank you.
I, I knew that was important.
Yeah.
We actually do have a council meeting the night before St. Patrick's Day, so.
I remember one that I was going to attend.
I stand corrected.
Alan, thank you for recognizing that.
The motion to adjourn.
Hold on a second. I think Kenyon just on here is stalling to get us past the 30-minute happy hour.
We're, we're 7:39. It's not going to make a difference.
All right. I, I, I have, I have heard a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? I have a second by, a, a motion by Mr. Godell, second by Ms. Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Thank you very much, counsel. We will see you all again soon. Thank you for the public that attended.
Thanks, everybody.